Cal, it's 2:59. Cal, it's 2:59. Are we, we're ready to go at 3 o'clock?
I've got my recorder. I've got it. One second.
I would love to see that, Bill, there. Really.
Good. They didn't give me the shortcut. What's the matter? No, they did not give me the shortcut.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I've been known to sit in these and go. Almost once in a deposition, they had the church. I would like to.
I think we ought to put a thing on the back that says, "Here come the judges."
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:00 P.M. on Thursday, July 21st, 2016. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development Committee Board of Supervisors. We have a form. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor, respect, and remember those five Dallas police officers, those three Baton Rouge police officers, and the one Kansas City police officer recently killed while doing their jobs of protecting us? Thank you very much. Please be seated. If you have a noise-making machine like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you would like to speak to the board, the staff during noon, there are forms in the back of the room to fill out and hand to the manager. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to the board this afternoon?
Yes, sir. Mr. George Huskamp, a suggestion for a sports facility located and adjacent to the Lutheran Church.
George Huskamp, 12820 Vista Pine Circle. I like to think that people know me not only for my personality, what there is of it, and having, coming up with unusual suggestions. And I think I have an unusual suggestion for you today. I think that the problem with, that you're experiencing with the, I don't like to call it the fun park, but the park that's being discussed all the time is, part of the problem is the concept of land usage. In the early days, it was easy to mix things, and everybody got along just fine. The world is not that way anymore. And so, I think that the problem is, the solution to the park should be that you move the basketball court or anything that was adult-oriented, adult meaning anybody over, say, 14 or 16 or something. So, anyone who is physically capable of being very active. And leave the children's stuff there. Children's things should be neighborhood-oriented or community development-oriented. And put the things like the basketball court or anything else that large or adults play and put it in someplace. For instance, although I haven't ever looked at it, but not a designer of facilities, over by the soccer fields or in that area. You're concentrating the air, the people who may cause a problem. You're protecting the people, the children who may be using the other facilities, but they don't mix. Now, whether there's another place that might be better, I don't know. But I think that a basketball court that, that has predominantly large, active people does not mix with swings and seesaws and things like that. And that is a basic problem of design. Now, you start that way, fine, because you've got all kinds of space and that sort of, but as time goes on, it's necessary to separate it. This suggestion will not, probably doesn't save any money, other than it might save an issue later on, which will end up costing money. And that's my suggestion.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Questions for Mr. Huskamp? Thank you very much, George. Mr. Manager?
Okay, and another one from Mr. Huskamp, non-basis of budget for meeting on August 18th.
Non is, non-agenda.
Oh, non-agenda?
Well, I tried to say that. I had a preview, N-O-N.
Uh-huh.
Doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
I have tried to understand what goes on in the administration of Gateway Services. When I come in contact with something, I try to find out as much as I can without getting underneath it. One of the things that is, I haven't understood lately is that there's a meeting for, for the, open to the public on August 18th. And the meeting is, in addition to normal meeting, is also to approve the currently tentative budget for the fiscal year 2017. The problem that I've had with that particular situation is that I am not sure what you're going to vote on. The last one, the first budget that I got a hold of was, was budget number two, or tentative budget number two. And I went through that as best I could. But I found out through the Internet and Facebook that there is another budget proposal, and a modification of budget two. And the one that the first, the next one I got a hold of was budget number four. And knowing that the dates of the things, I'm concerned that in addition to maybe budget number, budget change number four, there may be others. And I don't think there's any way that those of us who are not sitting here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, can know what's going on. So, we end up bothering the people over here. They, probably not a bother, but, but still. There needs to be a better, I still don't know what budget you're going to consider on August 18th. I've got, I've got number four in my hand, but I'm not convinced, just because of things I know that have changed, that that's the final budget. And I think you would, the people who don't sit here every meeting would like to know what's being voted on. And the only way to find out is posting on the website or something. And the website doesn't have anything, in fact, you'll have a hard time finding number four. So, my suggestion is that somehow or another, the information that you're, the very important information such as a budget, needs to be promulgated in, through the website rather than whatever you're doing right now. Because I don't know how I would go about finding it if I didn't call over here and, and make a trip over and so on and so forth. My suggestion.
George Choveroff, especially Mr. Newbauer, has told us on several occasions that we need to do better in conversing with our residents. And this is probably as good an example as any I can think of. Cal or April, can you see that either, the budget that we're going to consider next month is more readily available on the website? Or send Mr. Huskamp an email with that budget on it?
Absolutely. But the, the budget that is on the website, it's the tentative budget that was approved by the board prior to the June 15th deadline. That is what's on the agenda now. That's what was sent to the county, and that is the official. Now, what you've changed will be presented as amendments to that budget at the August meeting. I believe they're all in now, and that document's being updated. And we will, we can post it, we need to leave the tentative budget up there, but we can post it as a proposed amended budget for that public hearing. And so, they could see that. And I believe four is the most recent.
I'd like to answer that, please. I, I don't think that's an adequate answer, although it sells the, the government responses, the government responsibilities. But it doesn't allow any real communication for those of us who, I notice, you're gonna, you're, you're asking me to come to, to the budget meeting, and you're gonna surprise me. Oh, by the way, we've got this other thing we want to put in, and it's got $200,000 here and $50 here, and so on and so forth. I think that well, well ahead of time, just for the benefit of residents, not the government, but the residents, that you need to have that information out so, readily available, so there's no surprises when people come to the meeting.
We can make a hard copy available here.
We will get you somehow or other the very latest budget.
But it's not me. It's not just me. That's my point.
Well, the point is that, that Cal has said that he would put on the website the very latest amended budget. Thank you. Thank you.
Bill, do you want to talk to Tony?
Well, no, just a question, Cal. For clarification, it's not there. I didn't, I didn't find it now on district website. I just may want to double check that.
I'm looking too. I can't even find it. But I can't find a budget at all. I'm looking.
Under the budget, it should say the tentative.
Tony's right on the page right now.
Yeah, I, I searched budget under the district website.
Yeah.
There's resolution, bids, rules, and amendments. There's nothing under documents.
Click on documents.
Go on.
I don't see it.
That's all, folks?
Yeah, Cal, I put in, I searched budget in the search on the district website, and it came up just the.
Okay, we'll make sure it's posted.
If it's posted here, it's hidden.
Yeah, well, it needs to be posted, and it needs to be findable.
That's, the first is easy to do. The second is not so easy.
Well, it also should.
Well, that's why we're hiring you with these big bucks, to take care of the things that are not so easy.
Okay.
It should also include the proposed amendments.
Yep.
It's under documents, and it's listed budget, and he has.
Thank you, George.
It is there. It's under documents, and then under budget, and then.
They're all listed.
And then they're all listed.
Just for clarification, Cal, when I go to documents under, and the ladder's down, there's only three entries, resolutions, bid, prequalifications, gateway rules, and amendments.
Click on the Word document. Try that, Tony.
Okay.
The Word document is navigation tab.
Document library, yeah.
Is there? Just click on the Word document.
Okay. You hold your cursor over the Word document?
So, I have to go all the way down to the bottom? Oh, here we go. It's down, it's down to the tail end, yes. Proposed FY budget.
They're all listed.
Approved on 6/18. There's another one adopted, well, draft, yeah. FY 2017, V1 draft.
So, is it possible, when you click over, when you hover over documents, you have three or four subheadings? Is it possible maybe to add budget? That way, you have a shortcut link to the budget section?
I, I believe that this is one of the things that we were, were having issues with and why we were looking at redoing the webpage, the website. However, we have been taking some training courses on this, and I want to reevaluate our current website. I think it could be just a matter of us needing an upgrade to the software, and it just needs to be tweaked on the format. Because I actually learned this week that the platform of our website is what I'm used to working in for, at my previous employer. And it shouldn't be set up quite the way that it is. So, we're trying to research how to improve the current resource that we have in lieu of jumping right into a full-blown.
Just look and see if, that should be a navigation shortcut to a section.
Yeah, there's some.
So, just see if there's an easy way just to update budget on there, so you can have a quick shortcut link. And I guess the, I think Gary had mentioned, when we update that budget, we need to have the amendments. And is that ready? When, when would we publish the budget with the proposed amendments?
By August. Well, no, before it's adopted.
Yeah, two days before. It has to be posted to the website.
Is there any way to post that a little sooner?
Possibly. I'll check with Stephen and see.
And maybe on the front page, like under recent news, the budget should be there, so it's.
Proposed budget for.
Much more easily found.
Maybe too, that if there is going to be a modification of the website, it's something that obviously directly affects everybody's pocket. Therefore, it should be one of the topics that's right there and easily found.
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
Okay.
George, did you understand how you can find the budget? Not really. I, I don't speak computer. We'll write it down for you.
That's a good idea.
Well, I can show Mr. Huskamp for the reasons. I'll show him.
But it is a news item. It's a quick fix.
Yeah, you can do that.
We'll take care of it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Cal, for bringing Diane out.
Maybe you printed the amendments. Let Diane print the amendments.
Is the, is the budgets, with the two or three amendments that we've already adopted, available? Can, can Diane print that off for George, and even somebody others that may want it?
I'd like to get it blessed from Stephen, but what Stephen's got, we can have it available to him by noon tomorrow.
Well, is Stephen around?
I, I don't know. He's.
Could Diane call him?
Sure.
Good.
I mean, I could call him.
More better.
I think he's up to the revision four. That's what I, it's dated 7/13.
Yeah.
So, Stephen, if anybody knows the latest and greatest, it should be him. And if you could just send.
Why don't you ask Diane to do it, so we can keep the meeting going, please, Cal?
Sure.
I don't know if she's got his number. That's.
Well, I've got it, if you don't.
I do.
Okay. Do you, do we have other folks who want to talk to the board this evening?
Yes, we do. Mr. Tinkle on pond maintenance solicitations.
Ed Tinkle, 11180, Ben Pine Drive. Before I get into that, just a couple of other things, is that, not to prolong that last discussion, but I thought revision four was the one that was going to be presented for the August 18th hearing. Is that what we're agreeing to, or we're saying?
With the amendment, because we haven't finished our part that we've been doing.
So, so there's another.
We're shooting for an August 2nd date. That's what we were told.
So, then there may be another revision before the 18th, then?
August 4th is the last one at the moment.
Got you. Okay.
It's not the last one before we adopt.
Okay, fine.
But the last one has to be in within 48 hours of the meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. Couple of things that were on the agenda before I get into the aquatic maintenance solicitations. You have on the agenda tonight a discussion about the lift stations. And I don't want to steal any of Chris's thunder that he's going to talk about, but we had another incident in Gateway Greens that we had a lightning strike and knocked out a pump station, and we had some raw sewage floating in the streets of, yes.
Can I, can I interrupt you at that point? May I, or?
Oh, that's fine.
You should know, is there a lightning-arrester-type thing for these that we should have?
That's where I was going. We, we, we have a, almost every sewage station now, wastewater lift station, has a audiovisual alarm. Ours are antiquated, and that, talking to Chris, they don't have a battery backup. So, if you lose the lightning, you lose the power, the audiovisual doesn't go off either. What all these pump stations have is usually a mercury float switch, and it's on a, like what we call a Christmas tree. And whenever the water level goes up, it flips up, and it turns on a pump, and then it turns on another pump. To draw the flow down. When it keeps going up, it trips on an alarm float that says, hey, you're getting close to having a problem. And that triggers a light and a horn. Well, if the power is out, it doesn't do you any good. So, I think the point I was going to try to make, and I'm going to echo whatever Chris is going to tell you, is that I think we need to be going out and doing some testing and some expenditures on our pump stations and get them off this antiquated mode. Because raw sewage going down the streets isn't a pretty thing. And Tuesday night, it was going down the streets and into the storm sewers. So, anyway, that's all there is on that. I'll let Chris talk about it. Next item is, I just want to endorse what I believe staff is going to echo later on to you and recommend, and that's the Girl Scout building. I totally agree with that procedure. Going on.
Pond aquatic maintenance solicitations.
Thanks, Ed.
Since I've not done this before, the way you work it, it's a little bit different, more.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to get a understanding and make sure that the board is on.
The board is not on board?
I'm sorry. I want to make sure the board's online with what the committee and been working with April and Elle and Molly. And this is what I tried to recap in preparing the notice of bid. Notice of request to submit bids for pre-qualified advertisement, prequalification advertisement, August 1st. We understand that Tony's got to review some of these documents, the instructions, bidders, the general conditions, the, the bid package, the detailed specifications. So, we're going to get that to you as quick as possible. And if we have to slide some of this, as I'll indicate later on, we've got some room. But I need to get your thoughts to make sure that we're following the right way. Prequalification meeting mandatory, and a prequalification bid meeting. We're doing this as a combination deal. Mandatory meeting for the contractors, August the 11th. Prequalification packages submitted by the vendors back to the district by August 25th. Prequalification packages reviewed by staff, August 26th to 7th. How long does it typically take you guys to review these? Is this something done by staff in less than, in a week, to where we don't have to budget two weeks? We could cut back and save?
I think it more, it's a management-engineering aspect as to qualification.
I didn't have a feel. Typically, I put 14 days.
Cal, Danny? Danny's trying to hide behind you.
Yeah, I mean, two weeks is.
Two weeks is good. Okay, we'll just leave it there. Tony inserted, date of board approval of certain firms as prequalified. And I guess what he's saying there is, is that staff will do the review, and then I guess they bring it to you to endorse?
Make recommendations.
So, then we need to somehow get that in. And as I understand it, your board meetings are on the 1st and the 15th?
First and Thursday. Thursday.
But I mean, that's the 1st and the 15th of September. So, you might know it always happens to be right in the middle. That might move it back. So, the certified letters to the bidders, if we bring this to the board on the 15th, that moves everything from number six down and moves it back one week. But going on, bids from prequalified bidders submitted to staff and read aloud, I guess, you guys do it different down here. I always, the boards officially always did that where I'm from, but staff does it. So, we can have that in a non-meeting arrangement.
It's a noticed setting, but it's not a board meeting.
Not a board meeting, okay. So, you guys don't get the pleasure of ripping them, opening them up and doing that, okay?
Cal, April, here's Andy.
You're missing all the fun and shock. Bids from prequalified bidders reviewed by staff. Again, I put in about a two-week period on that. And this is after, once we prequalify and you endorse the prequalification, then we send a certified letter to the bidders notifying who's qualified and who's not. It'd be real simple if everybody qualifies. But if they don't, we'll only send certified letters to the ones that qualified, Dear John letters to the others. And the prequalified bidders, they get an additional three weeks to get the bid package back in to you.
And we may need to, the way the rules are set up also, at the same time, it may be considered duplicative, but duplicate effort. But send any one, any firm that's prequalified an additional invitation to submit bids.
You think that?
Way it was set up, yeah.
Additional?
But that can be the same time, that can be the same time they're determined to be prequalified.
So, the certified letter just adds that, is that you've been qualified, we invite you to submit a bid?
Correct.
Okay, additional invite, okay. Certified board, or CDD board accepts the bids and issues a notice of award, October 13th. Contract documents submitted to the bidders for signature, October 14th. And they have four or five days to get all the bids, the bonds, and everything put together, come back signed to you. And then I put the CDD board meets and signs contracts and documents and issues notice to proceed, October 20th. This necessitates, because your contract expires September 30th, an extension of time. And April has gone out, and she's been great to work with on this, so she's really up, up on it. Has gone to Aquagenics, and we have a two-day or a two-month agreement to hold the prices from Aquagenics to get us through October and November, should we need it. By this schedule here, I think we probably would only be able, or only have to worry about one month. But I don't see any way in the world that you can do it any quicker and have it done by the end of September. I just don't think the time's there to do it. I guess the questions I've got for you all is, does this satisfy what you're looking at? Does everybody understand the, the format that we're on? I think the critical one is getting Tony to review all the documents. We've pretty much used, hate to use the word plagiarized, that was used enough this week.
Replicate.
Replicate. We replicated, we replicated Pelican Preserve's work. And hopefully, your review of documents will really be down to, Tony, the detailed specifications and the notices.
Yeah, my reflection is, I believe I did review the Pelican Preserve contract way back when, the general conditions.
Okay, okay. We, we, we took our old one, and we saw that it had some need for modification, so we just stole that, replicated that. So, anyway, that's the schedule we're on. Now, we've got a couple of issues that we need some help on, and probably Tony from you. We're putting this thing out for bid. We're giving the bidders a document similar to this that outlines all of our ponds and everything that they're going to be doing, the four flowways and 60 ponds. And we've got an issue, and that has to do with easements and access. One of the problems we have, and it remains a problem every 30 days that Elle and I go out and take samples, is that when you go across I-75 on the west side, and you go out of, I don't know what that, it's not Renaissance, what is that? Back to behind percent, Reflection Lakes, thank you. When you go back there, Daniel Boone, Hiawatha, and everybody else is on that path to get back to the pond. We really need to get WCI to get in and fix that easement, so that these bidders that are going to do the work, that have to go back there and, and address not only the flowway, but that 20-plus acre pond back there, they're going to have to be able to take equipment back there. And right now, you've got four or five months of the year, you can't get back there. You have to be helicopter dropped. You just can't get in. I don't understand what is holding WCI from going back there, leveling that road, stoning it. And it's the only way we go. Elle and I go the other way, and we're not doing it the right way. We're going on a path that's not correct. But it's the only way you can get back there, when it's wet. Somehow, we need to be able to take, if we're going to be responsible, we, the CDD, are responsible for maintaining that pond. And we have to get vendors to and from that place one, two, three, four times a month to do their thing, then they're going to have to be able to get back there. And on occasion, they're going to need a boat, and there is no way, a couple of weeks ago, we went back there, there's no way in the world you could get a boat there.
I guess for clarification, Ed, and then question for Mr. Newbauer. For clarification, the access you're talking about, do you go east on Palmetto and then basically north paralleling I-75?
You go north on the road to Reflection. And before you get to Reflection, there is a road that goes due east over to I-75.
Correct.
Then it follows I-75 up, and then it starts meandering along the, the pond back to the, the gate where we go in. Between Palmetto and overgrowth, undergrowth, whatever you want to call it, but chuckles, huge chuckles in that road. Somebody's got to get in it, because these vendors are not going to be able to access that to do it and do it right. So, we need some help on getting access.
That, excuse me, that, that's the route that has been worked on for a long time. And that's also one of the lingering issues, as WCI proposes to have the deed conveying Area 9 to the district. That's one of the big lingering issues, is they need to address the permanent access as opposed to temporary ingress, egress that was worked out a long time ago between Lennar, WCI, and the district. There's a Fort Myers utility easement along that same route, and then there's a billboard, I guess that's in the way.
I didn't see a billboard.
Yeah, there's a billboard easement or something like that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, easement, okay.
Along that same area. And I, I believe that's the same route. I could be wrong. Maybe Danny knows that the WCI vendors have utilized in the past to access the maintenance.
I would suggest some more pain is just let them take over Flowway 1 and the maintenance of 132. Because we've got to be able to get in there, and these vendors are, I can hear it at the pre-bid meeting, they're going to scream bloody murder. How do we get back here? We're going to be responsible, because we now have a penalty clause in our contract. And that pond is, is just ripe for penalties. So, we need some, we need some help.
Again, I'm not physically accessible, from my understanding, the same method of access along I-75 has been, which has been used for years, and I could be wrong. By the current district vendors, and I think that's also what WCI's been using, again, I could be wrong. And the permanent easement has not yet been provided, which would be go due east and go north paralleling I-75.
That's what we understand, but it's, it by no means is ready to take, to give to vendors to use it.
There's no other way to get there, is my understanding.
There is another way, but it's illegal.
Well, we, we also.
It's illegal.
Goes through the conservation.
Goes through the conservation easement.
Yeah, and we also tried to get a.
Yeah, and we also tried to get approval. You'll remember that we actually could access it off of I-75.
And DOT said no.
Correct, we tried that and that would.
Yeah, that would be risky, yeah. It's not that big of a deal. If they get in there with a grater and some stone, they could work it. But I've got a real problem with, one of the things you said is if we don't have that easement, I don't know how in the world we can pass on to a vendor a responsibility to.
Temporary.
Temporary easement.
We don't have the permanent one that we wished.
I just bring it up as it is a problem. It is a major problem. I'm hoping to try to help solve that. That's issue one. The other issue, and it's not much prettier, is that we have Flowway 4, Margaret's favorite flowway. The, all the water leaving Stony Brook goes over the weir and then follows Flowway 4 under Gateway Boulevard and then over to Pond 130. To the left, if you go out Gateway Boulevard and you're going out to 82, when you cross the little bridge, if you look to the left, again, you'll find lions and tigers and bears down there. It's horrible. And it's not being maintained, not being maintained at all because there's no way to get to it. What we'd like to do is see is if WCI would agree to granting us a, well, first of all, I asked Tony, does that flowway have the same 10-foot LME that everything else has, both sides?
I don't know, I didn't, I'd have to check the plans and.
I looked, I couldn't find it, which then.
Which lake are we talking about, Ed?
Flowway 4.
Flowway 4.
It's the flowway that comes right about, yeah, there it is, there it is.
Okay, comes out of Stony Brook, okay.
Between Gateway Boulevard and Stony Brook, you're on the FPL easement, so it's not so bad. We can get in there and work on it. This side of it, if you look at it going down there driving and look back there, it's ugly. It's bushes, trees, and we talk about residents that are building stuff in the LME. I mean, this is horrible. It needs to go in and be cut, in my opinion, 20 feet on both sides to where the vendors can get in there and do their work. If you look at it right now, it's just, it's ugly. But we need some assistance, maybe a call to WCI. I think the easiest way to do it would be to cross the flowway going south and you get to the area where we put in the 60-inch pipe Hampton Park that went across, they have that area cut. Make a big U-turn there and come back along the right-of-way back to the creek or to the flowway and then cut both sides of it where we can maintain it. But again, that's one that we've got a requirement to maintain and we're ignoring it. I know you probably see it every day. It looks horrible, looks horrible. But if we're going to be doing maintenance of these things, let's do it and do it right. So those are two that we need some help on. When we get to the pre, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, shouldn't Aquagenics be maintaining that now? I mean, it had been cleaned out at one time.
Yes, but I don't know how they get there. Nobody's doing anything with it, nobody's working on it right now. Nobody's working on it. I've had that same question, is if it's a part of the contract, we just kind of closing our eyes, I guess. But it's a problem and I don't know how they get there. To do some type of a drop-off off the road like you were talking about at I-75, it's such a vertical drop-off. I don't think you could do it. You almost have to go down and wrap back. Prado, is that, yeah, that's the one to the north that they're building. It's getting close to it, but I don't know that you want to have a path from Prado back there and then have an Aquagenics going between houses. So I think it's better to come back the other direction. That probably wouldn't fly very well. But again, we need help on that because when we have that prebid meeting, I'm sure those questions are going to come up. In the past, we haven't been doing any, what I would call surveillance and making sure that the contractors and vendors are complying. But now into this new one, we are, we're going to dock their pay. And I'm sure they're going to scream like a pig under a gate that, how do I do it if I can't get access to it? So that's all I had unless anybody had any questions. We need some help on those easements.
Thank you.
Ed, just two quick questions. With your prequalifying, so we're hoping to either strike out or pass through vendors on that prequal step, shouldn't be a whole lot of review on there, right?
I think the biggest problem is going to be the combination of the pond maintenance standards, the combination of a detailed specification that we have written on this that's very definitive as to the work they're going to do and be responsible for, followed by a pretty strict penalty clause that if they fail on, keep in mind, we're doing all 64 ponds and flowways individually on a quarterly basis. If they miss a quarter, they lose 10% of their pay on that pond. They miss two consecutive quarters, they lose 25% of pay. If they lose three or more, fail the point system, they lose 50% of their pay. Now, we have an incentive package that if they go four straight quarters of above 85 points on the rating system, then they're going to get a 5% add-on to their contract for those ponds. And then we're also telling them, because I've been down this road before and been burnt, we're going to have a clause that they can't unbalance their bid. So in other words, they go out here and we have a cupcake pond in Gateway and they have $300,000, $400,000 in their contract and 399 of it's on that pond right there and we're doing all the rest of them for free? Uh-uh, we ain't playing that game. So they can't unbalance their bid.
And that structure is kind of based on, is that kind of industry standard or?
We're kind of following what I guess Phil and the PP people did, is that's the way they went of setting it up by pond. And I'm sure they did it for the same reason, is to have accountability per pond.
Yeah.
Instead of shotgunning, when you're doing 64 ponds, it's very difficult to achieve a level of compliance where they could achieve the 5% coverage of, let's say, algae, but one pond's 100%.
Yeah, I understand that, I just.
We're doing it by pond.
That, okay. And so coming out of the prequal, when you go into actually qualifying for, for the bids, are you, are you guys having, like your rating scale or your evaluation scale, is that something that you've got set? You're going to rate on these 10 areas, put a rating on it and then?
I'm going to defer because what we did is we took the document that you all used for the erosion, prequalification, and essentially used that same format, changed erosion or changed erosion control and construction work to aquatic work. And they have to fill it out. I think the biggest one they've got is that they've got to show five years of doing the work that's equal to the scope of Gateway. That's going to be tough. We might, we might lose a couple of people that'll come in here and try to bid and they just don't have the ability to do Gateway's work.
Yeah, I was just making sure when we come to the approval process that we've got at least a percentage based on quantifiable rating that we say, okay, these three vendors have rated between the 80% and then we chose this one because maybe there was 10 or 20%, you know, whatever the intent.
What the emphasis is.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to rely on April and Molly and Elle because they've been through, Danny, they've been through that on the other. But we just robbed what you guys did before on prequalification.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Then we've got Kathleen Flaherty and she wanted to talk about the Fun Park.
Kathleen Flaherty, 12566 Ivory Stone Loop. I know there was a lot of concern at the last meeting about the Fun Park and I was, I don't see anything in the agenda of an update, so I was wondering what has happened since the last meeting.
I can grab an update?
Thank you.
I have been working with the Lee County Sheriff's Office and we have got them scheduled to start the three-month detail on July 24th. And we've opened a purchase order for $12,425 and that will be from July 24th through October 15th. The hours were, what's that?
You may not want to make that totally public.
Well, I was just going to say that the hours were going to, were really selected randomly by the Lee County Sheriff's Office as far as expressing our needs. Okay. Also, we were looking at a program that the Sheriff's Office brought up and told me about that I'm kind of excited about. It is, it's in October and they have a program called Celebrate Safe Communities Event. October is Crime Prevention Month and this is an event that they get together, it would be us partnered with the local communities over there at the park. They've also reached out to the two HOAs neighboring the park. And I basically, before I escalated it to meeting and planning this event, I wanted to run that by the board and just make sure that I had buy-in from our part. The event is, they work with a lot of different communities. It would be, you know, kind of like our Christmas event where they come in, they can, we can do speakers. They give us a whole laundry list of different things that we can include in those, in that daily event. And so I basically just wanted to make sure that I had buy-in from you guys to proceed and meet with the two HOAs and have a meeting with the Lee County Sheriff's Office and plan something like that for the month of October.
Any downside?
I can't think of one.
Why is it only the two HOAs? You eluded from them to.
Well, well.
Sorry, I didn't finish.
I'm sorry.
And then back, so is this to be a community event or is this to just simply be there?
Well, I believe that it could be open to all, I mean, if that's the direction, then we can open it to several HOAs. Right now, I'm planning on, it's going to be a community-wide event, of course, but right now, I was just looking for the planning. We want to have a meeting to plan the event. So if you would like me to invite, you know, other people, then that's fine. But right now, I'm looking just for a meeting to plan the event. And that was going to revolve around the issues that we're having specifically in that park.
People don't like to be left out, invite as many people as you can and hopefully someone will show up.
Okay.
And the event, what location are you considering?
The Fun Park.
The Fun Park.
You know, maybe we should reach out to the leaders at the Trinity Church because they're right there as well and they've had, they've got some influence over there. But I think opening up to the community is a great idea. I mean, every community has some of the, some issues.
Yeah, and we can also get South Trail involved. All kinds of good stuff from South Trail.
Yeah.
Great group. So, yes, it could be a community-wide safety event.
Yeah.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Please proceed, April.
Okay, we are also looking at, we're trying to research some lighting for the area. So far, we've reached out to our contractor, they're installers and they're providing us some information as far as a vendor that would, that, you know, actually sells, sells the lighting. And so we're working on planning that. We are currently in the process of reviewing the signage. And regarding the signage, we're going to, we're going to combine that with evaluating the signage around our ponds. Tony brought up an issue today and has provided us an opinion regarding the safety of alligators and the wildlife in our ponds and in our community. So we're going to evaluate that opinion and when we evaluate the signage at the park, we're going to be doing that as well.
All right, well, let's talk about that. Please, when we discussed the meeting, I left here and said, we never discussed what the hours of operation are or aren't of the park. Did we ever, we never concluded it.
I think it's dusk to dawn is what stated.
Is that what we want it to be? And if it's dusk to dawn, then are we telling that nobody's supposed to be in that park after dusk? And define dusk, because somebody's going to pinpoint that and say, tell me what that time is.
Yeah. What do we have, don't we have something stated on the soccer complex?
It says, it says dawn to dusk at the soccer complex because I went over there today as well. So somebody.
There was something on a sign that I was looking at.
Every one of us would look at you and go, that, or me, so shouldn't we set specific hours?
There's some signage that I was researching before the meeting and it stated dusk to dawn and then there was something explicit that said a half hour after dark or something. Yeah, that, you know, it gets hard to put in an hour depending on what time of year. And really, we just don't want anyone there after dark. So I think we just got.
If you have the new lights on, it's not going to be dark.
Well, I mean, the lights should not be illuminated enough to where it's going to encourage. I mean, that's, they're safety lights. But I think you're right, Gary, I think we need to figure out a way, and we could probably reach out to the park, you know, Lee County Parks or do some research, figure out how you define that so even kids would understand, we're not supposed to be here after dark.
Well, the ladies though, I got the implication, especially the one lady that was here that spoke so well, that one of the attractions for her to be located at a place where other people might not want to be located, which is her house is adjacent to the park. Purposely, she's there and talked about how her kids went there, et cetera. And I can remember even in my wayward youth that it was better that I was at a park and I was something else. And I don't think it's those kids that we're trying to stop. I think it's this other element, I'm going to call it, i.e. the suspicion of drugs, which nobody's been able to prove yet, but there's allegations that there are drugs, sexual activities, yada, yada, this isn't the kids that are, and that's, okay? And I don't think there's any one of us that would object to the fact that when Bill wants to go and play basketball at midnight, that he could go over there and as long as he was playing basketball, what the heck?
Well, but the, but the park's not, I mean, it, the park should, no one should be out there after dark just because we don't, we don't, we don't, well, we don't, it's not, it's not equipped for night play. I think it becomes a liability and safety concern at that point from a district perspective.
But if we light it.
Well, it's not going to be.
Then you're inviting.
Well, I'd say we have light out there today and people don't play at that park at night. They go there for other reasons, I guess.
You know, so that's, we never, she can't move in a direction until we decide what we decide.
And we haven't decided enough to even lay out what exactly, how many light poles and how bright they're going to be.
Correct.
And when they're going to come on and when they're going to lock it on and off. There's a hundred thousand items that we need to get through.
But I can tell you one thing we need, we need a new sign, which we shouldn't be studying it. We should have ordered it two weeks ago. The sign that defines that park, neighborhood park, is blistered and it's crumbling and it's falling apart.
Is that the one out by the Gateway Boulevard?
You got it.
Okay, yeah.
That should have been ordered two weeks ago.
We will look in the stock to see if there's another one out there. I have a feeling.
And if there isn't, it should be ordered tomorrow.
There's, April, on that, the handout that I had, it's, I think it's said on there, so, either hours of operation, it's dusk to dawn and then there's a statement that says something about half an hour after dark or whatever. I know there's some examples of what should be used on that to, so you can clarify. Because our hours of, even if we simply say dusk to dawn, I think there's probably something else that needs to be added there just to say, you know, no one is permitted after dark or half an hour after dark or whatever that.
But is that really what we want?
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how else you can do it.
If we light the place, is that, is that the intent?
No, the lighting is not to do anything else but to provide just basic illumination enough from a safety perspective that you can identify, I think, identify if someone's there and to eliminate the dark corners.
Then, then I question, because I drove past it just before the meeting and saw the same sign at the soccer fields, now closed dusk to dawn. Now, we've got lights on that field. Now, are we saying that while that, they're having those nighttime activities with lights, that they're actually defiling that sign that says dusk to dawn? Or is that sign really in a?
Well, I think when the lights are on, it's, the park would be considered open for those sanctioned leagues.
It says closed dusk to dawn, the sign's right there.
Yeah, I mean, unless you want to put a statement that says, or, or for sanctioned.
What I'm saying is, is we don't have the clarification between us to be able to even give her guidance or anybody's guidance as to how to enforce what's unenforceable. So somebody should come up with what.
This is, this is why we have a professional manager.
Would you like me to bring back the signage example? I'll bring a recommendation back as far as what signs we should have where.
The question is, is based, I'll do it based upon what you guys at the board tell me to do. So now you're throwing the ball down a different gutter.
No, I'm not throwing the ball in the gutter at all. What I'm saying is, we have a professional manager. She's going to be in contact with lighting folks who presumably have done things like this in the past and camera folks who presumably have done things like this in the past.
What have we done on cameras? What have we done on cameras?
I haven't, I have not got very far on camera. I haven't, I have not got very far on cameras. Um, that will probably be our most expensive, uh, most complicated solution.
It's our most safety solution.
The, members of the board, Kathleen, uh, really let the cat out of the bag.
Good for you.
Today, uh, April has indicated that she's making some progress on it, but we still have a ways to go.
Oh, absolutely.
And I presume that she's going to continue working on it and when she has some specificity to run by us, she will.
How about a date certain?
Is that, is that.
I, I, I think a date certain would be unfair considering that we have to go out and I'd like to evaluate how some other parks are doing it. And I also need to reach out to vendors to receive proposals and that, and that's kind of out of my control as far as who we're looking at and how many I can, I can get interested to come out here and show us their product.
Okay, then how about, how about this? If you're going to be, if Bill just asked you the thing about you're going to be the one that's going to determine the hours of operation of that park, you should be able to have that determination by next meeting.
The hour, the hours of operation?
Yeah.
So you just, you just want set hours?
No.
I, I don't understand.
I, I think it's, I think the dawn to dusk is the best. And you can, dawn and dusk is, you know, when the sun is, before the sun hits the horizon is dawn. And when the sun hits the horizon again, that's dusk. And it's, I don't know, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes.
While it's setting down the sun.
I mean, it's just, it's, uh, it's not, I don't understand why there's an issue here. But dawn to dusk, set hours is going to, it.
You can't determine that.
You can't determine specific hours because the sun is, you know.
The sun changes and.
All year long.
Daylight savings time, da-da-da-da-da.
It's crazy.
Dusk to dawn, no play after dark and just come up with a, with a sign. You've got the foundation for most of this anyway.
I don't think the neighbors are going to appreciate it if Bill goes out there and tries to play midnight basketball. I'm just saying.
Why not? I think they'd be applauding if Bill was out there.
I'm going to do that. I haven't done that for a year.
Yeah, I, I think the half hour.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, the half hour after dawn, dusk, dawn.
After dawn?
It's good, because you figure you have all ages of people that go out there and little people are home by dinnertime for the most part unless they come out with their parents. But teenagers, they kind of hang out a little bit.
They, they like to stay out.
Yeah.
Even though it's a little dark.
Yeah.
So then are we going to kick them out?
Not a solution.
I don't, I, I, maybe we should talk about.
Most of the people that are at the park that are there to use the park the way it's intended are typically gone about the half hour mark after, uh, after it gets dark. And that's, and I, it's just what I've noticed.
All right, let's go to a different topic. While I, I had taken some pictures the last meeting that never even got up there, but that's nobody's fault. But there were pictures of numbers of piles of dog waste that were there. And in fact, when I visited the park, I watched somebody come out of that, um, community with their dog. Right while I was just standing there kind of going around shooting pictures, the dog eliminated and the young man very nicely took the beige dog and walked back in through the gate, et cetera, et cetera. Further inspection, there is one dog waste station for that whole park. Yet there's this other thing, all these other areas. And so I can easily imagine that nobody's going to bother to walk over to the other end of the park to try to do it. So instead you've got kids playing around with piles of dog waste that are there. And I had pictures of them, you know, disgusting, terrible, et cetera. We need another dog waste station. There's also a huge iron pipe that's been broken off or cut off and just sits there on the ground in the grass, jagged edges, perfect for some kid.
Is it vertical or horizontal?
It's, it's round and sticking up like this with the jagged edges.
Is that near the playground?
Yeah. So I can easily envision some child going in. We need to get somebody to cut that off, cover it, do something. It's just an accident waiting to happen for a kid.
So, April, I, I think if we were to prioritize and from a timing perspective, I think that the signage is something we should be able to move on relatively quickly. Um, so let's get the signage updated. If we're trying to incorporate other signage needs, I think that's great. But let's at least go ahead and pull the trigger with the, um, with the, with the fun park updates. Because we've made a commitment to, to some improvements and that's a good first step. The lighting and the cameras are going to take a little bit of time to research, especially with the cameras. Because it, there's going to be server backups and what types of cameras. That's going to take a little bit more consideration, I understand that. But let's at least show something.
Now, one of the issues that we covered with the cameras is that we wanted a, we wanted technology to be able to, um, record and we wanted to be able to record a, a clip off of this surveillance footage and like put it on a PDF or, or what have you. Um, I, I know they're popping up everywhere and so I just wanted to throw that out as far as so when I meet with a vendor, I can, uh, explore all possibilities. But there is something as far as, I know it's not specifically for security, but it may meet our goals as well. And that's just a webcam on the park. So anyone can zoom in anytime. And because they're popping up everywhere, I have a feeling that the, that it might be, uh, a less expensive solution, but also possibly maybe fun.
And you can back that up on a server and still access the, the point in time. They're a lot cheap, not a lot, but they are sometimes more cost-effective than the security cameras. And you can plug in a URL and see what's happening at the fun park anytime you want. Which is, which may, or may not be something that we want, but. We might have our own reality TV show going on there. So, but that is a good possibility.
Where would you mount it?
I would suggest that, any discussion about the location of any of the, uh, security? Be one of those closed-door sessions where we have the recommendations.
Yeah, well, two, two separate issues. I mean, I, I think the webcam would, would not be a security issue, but, but a security camera, surveillance type of camera would be. So I think, and I think that's something else to consider, is I think we'd be two and, two opposite ends of the, of the spectrum.
Okay, then one last question. What's the maintenance schedule for that park? What's the assignment of an individual? Or is there a specific individual that's assigned to that park? That's their responsibility, they take ownership of it, they take the pride and ownership of it, and they're totally responsible for it?
There are two individuals. The, Anthony is currently in charge of the parks and Elle has been supporting him and kind of mentoring him on the parks and recreation side. And then every morning, uh, the first assignment for, um, Pete is to go over, I, I, I try to get him there about a quarter after seven. He gets here at seven. Um, and that's his first hit of the morning is to go over and clean the fun park.
But the maintenance, how frequently does he go and physically walk that park and fix what needs to be fixed?
Um, we're working on routine maintenance schedules right now as far as like pressure washing the playground and checking the benches. I, I'm not sure exactly how often he's getting over there. I know we just replaced the basketball nets, um, so he is getting over there frequently. But right now we're actually working on inspection logs to document all of that stuff so we can actually answer those questions, you know, definitively.
Isn't that what this is for? Yeah. The maintenance inspection report?
Yeah, yeah, Justin's walking it once a month.
So once a month, they should be inspected.
But you're not, that guy can come once a month, right now the condition is. We've, we've hired somebody whose responsibility is to take care of parks.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I was just calling out that the site inspection report should catch something.
How much for you? You said you researched the, the invoice when I sent you an email.
It was, they, I think they did the receptacles and I think that was a bundle purchase that we did. And I think it was, I think it was seven or eight grand. And I think the court was probably, probably, uh, four or five of that.
It was four, forty-five hundred for resurfaced the court, if I remember correctly.
Already it's cracked and no one's filling in the cracks. And I just walked through a, a Home Depot last week searching for a ceiling fan with Darling Jane and looked right there and they had the composite right in the crack and we don't do anything.
Yes, I see.
We do a lot of lift service, we don't do a lot of action.
Yes, I spoke to Justin.
I drove by the park again today.
And that's a, that's a special type of surface. Um, it's a special application. It's not something that Anthony can just go and fill in with concrete filler.
Why not?
Uh, I, I don't, do you know anything about basketball court surfaces?
So it's better to just leave the crack there and hydraulics and et cetera? We're not taking action, that's my point.
No, I didn't, I didn't imply that.
Are we taking action? Is there something that you're doing?
Yes, it's, it's in my binder for this fun park initiative to address it.
Okay.
Have we heard enough about the fun park from this afternoon?
Yes.
I believe so.
I believe so.
While I'm here.
Apparently not, huh?
Done with the fun park, okay. Um, while I'm here, there is something that I, I wanted to ask. Um, the banners that we post your meetings for are in need of replacement.
They were down, they need to.
So, so.
You can't read the ones, don't you?
I didn't, I didn't know what your position was, why we started putting them out, if you feel that they're still necessary. But I wanted, I just wanted to discuss that with you. Do you want those, do you want us to continue doing that or forego that process?
I can't imagine that anybody's going to read that and come to this meeting and if they, if they want to come, they will.
Yeah.
Keep track, if you've got enough to do, is it this Thursday or last Thursday? Or is it, this is the time when there's three weeks between meetings instead of two or something like that? Your schedule is not firm. You do it based on what you want to do and when holidays are up and the signs are definitely a factor, a good factor to have up there for those of us who don't keep track of the meetings as our primary object.
Don't we meet the first and third, Thursday of every month?
Thursday at three o'clock for years.
Except when it's come close to holiday or something like that. You, you still, you will change it according to what you want to do.
You've heard from George, are we going to remake new banners and post them to take, put them up and take them down? Or we're going to forget that little chore and get on to more important things?
It's probably a couple hundred bucks to replace them and it's staff time to go out and put them up and take them down.
I'm in favor of stopping it.
Well, if we save the staff time, can you fix the concrete?
I, I don't believe that, I don't believe that that's in our talent package to address the con, the, the surface of the basketball court.
But we will find something for those people to do instead, right?
Absolutely.
The, the banners at the entryway in the inn, when we have events, uh, I think one of the biggest issues that, that we have is being able to communicate when we're doing stuff. And, and those locations are nice to be able to say when the Christmas tree is or if there's a fishing tournament. But I still think a sign that, that's that small is hard to read. And I've put a lot of banners out with, with our nonprofit to try to get, um, people to, to visit it. And we had to go bigger. Um, honestly, I would much rather, we've got some space on, on Gateway Boulevard, um, past Stoney Brook where there's space on the side. I'd much rather have a, a larger billboard, um, where we can post information, even rent some space, uh, to make some money off than just that small little, because depending on if it's not pulled correctly, it bends. And I just think there, there might be a better way to communicate with Gateway residents.
And I was a little, I was a little confused because I, I think staff typically, when other commercial businesses do it in the community, I've been directing staff to go out and pick theirs up and take them down.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't, I don't know if billboards would even, anyone would entertain that idea. But if it, if you did something that looked nice, you could do, you know, larger.
I don't know if the carrying would let us know.
On the, like, on the Gateway Boulevard or in the, anyway.
Just generally off-premises signs, I think that's maybe what Margaret's referring to, if it's off-premises and for meetings. But as Mr. Measy mentioned, the future meetings are all on the district website. It's very clear, easy to find.
You can find them.
Well, that's easy to find. That one's easy to find, yes.
That one is easy, just go to meetings.
Yes, it says future meetings and it has them all through this fiscal year, yes.
I think we're going to forget about the banners.
At least for now, we've, we've got them for the special events, maybe something that, I'd rather we're concentrating on bigger things than those banners right here. We've got a whole lot of things.
You can't, you can't read them unless you really know what they say anyway, drive by.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's my.
Kathleen, you really did an number on us this time. Uh, Mr. Manager, what?
Uh, you have one more, but, uh, from Phil Measy, but, uh, Phil has said he'd like to hold that until you address an issue that Tony is bringing forward under his topic. And if there's anything that needs to be said, then he would say it at that time.
Okay, then we're finished with, uh, uh, audience public comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Committee reports three A, Landscape Advisory Committee minutes. That was in your agenda, any questions or a motion for approval?
Do we have the increased landscape advisory committee minutes?
I don't think so.
We do?
Well, we're going to ninth. Or at least we need to make it a matter of record.
We just need to accept them, right?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's five zero, Mr. Manager. Consent agenda four, items A through D. Are there items in the consent agenda the members would like to discuss individually? Please call out your veteran that you would like to discuss. A, B, C, or D?
I have none.
Motion to approve. Motion to make to approve the consent agenda, may I have a second?
Second.
And second, any other? Any other conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, five zero, Mr. Manager. Section five, discussion items. A is the utility expenditures for lift station pumps. Where is the gentleman who's arguing?
Is this, is this, we're going to help us with?
Yes.
I think he cheated.
Yeah, excuse me. Chris Schumaker, utility manager and had an agenda item today, um, for the purchase of two lift station pumps. And the reason I'm bringing this to you today is, um, the two pumps, one of them is to replace a pump at the Magnolia Lift Station that was struck by lightning and disabled. And we took that and another spare pump that we had, um, to make her electric and had them diagnose it to look at a, a fix. And the, the price to go in and fix the pump, um, was forty-one hundred and eighty-six dollars, where a brand-new Willow pump was sixty-nine hundred dollars. And when we looked at that price difference, the repair pump, of course, doesn't come with a warranty. And again, is a used pump and both of them had some age on them. So our recommendation was to purchase two of the new Willow pumps instead of having the other pumps rebuilt. And one of those pumps will go directly into the Magnolia Station to replace the pump that was struck by lightning. Because right now it's operating on one and the second one would become the spare pump. And the ten horsepower pumps are the pumps size that we use most often in the twenty-one lift stations serving Gateway.
Thank you. Questions for group from the side, Mr. Newman?
Two questions.
Sir.
I, I actually, I, I asked the questions before, but I'm being repetitive. Isn't there something that is a, some type of lightning protector for these things?
Yes, sir, and we, we do have surge suppression and also, um, I checked myself and those stations are grounded. And when that station took a hit, it was almost a direct hit.
Okay.
And, and we are making sure and where there aren't the older stations, if they don't have grounding or the properly sized suppressor. And I actually ran into that at a junction box we looked at recently. And it was funny because the lightning arrestor was about the size of a quarter and that's what they put in there. So we're looking at upgrading some of those older ones. But if you take a direct, almost a direct hit like that. It follows those control cables down. And, uh, we had another hit that Mr. Tingle mentioned and it, it took out some of that protective equipment, some of the relay. some of the relays. And luckily, after checking the pumps, they were not damaged.
How about the back of battery backup?
Uh, in that case, there, there is not battery backup in most of those stations.
And, comma, why not?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, we do have in the budget this year, there's several, several projects that were approved to address these situations. And one is, uh, there is money in the budget and we're just getting bids now to put permanent backup generators at the three main stations. So if we have power outage-
Right.
Um, you know, that those stations will come on automatically. And also, there is twenty thousand dollars in the budget for telemetry or a SCADA system, which could actually send an alarm to a cell phone-
Right.
Back to the office here that that pump station is going down.
And then the person that's on call would get triggered.
What's the battery backup cost? What do we?
Well, the battery backup would just be in there because of what happened when the alarm didn't go off or you'd have that light and audio alarm go on. When that lightning struck, it knocked the power out to the whole station, hence the light, the alarm didn't go on. And if you had a SCADA system, once you saw that power outage-
That's why you need the generator, you need the generator backup. The battery is just, uh, it won't, it's not, it's not powering the pump. It's just, okay.
Yeah, it's just powering that. And we also, uh, a third thing we're looking, um, right now too, and moving some budget funds around is to get an emergency bypass-
Yeah.
Pump for these stations that we can take right to there. And not only can you use them in emergency, but if you have to work on this system for maintenance or you're taking your panel down-
Right.
You could hook that up.
So then my third question was the fact of, you didn't mention the fact of taking that pump that would have been, your choice was either new or rebuilt.
Right.
Wouldn't you still have rebuilt that pump to keep it as a spare here, especially now that we're in lightning season that you would in fact have two pumps?
Well, we, we do have one spare back there right now and we're, and the reason we have that is we didn't install it over in Magnolia. It's running on one pump, so it's still sitting there as the spare. It's when I buy this, that one will go into Magnolia.
But don't we really need that? I mean-
Yes, yes, sir. And, and, and with the new ones, it's just when you look at it-
No, 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 I'm just looking more as the, as the-
You need a backup.
Stony Brook or whomever or Gateway Greens or whoever. That, that, this is the season and we're, we're nowhere near done with it. And lightning strikes are just something that, but thank your lucky stars that you weren't in the dog park. Where you never would've gone-
And I, and I'll bring another issue. When you look at some of those things, even a bypass pump, you didn't get any in the details. So you buy the bypass pump and say the, the, a station goes down. And one of the things we looked at is making that connection. And some of the stations, the easements are so small or they're landscaped in that there's no access to get in there. And one of the stations I looked at, I said, well, we're gonna have to take a piece of the hedge out and cut a little doggy door in the fence, so to speak, and then maybe we can screen it with some green screen so you can't see it. So if indeed we need that equipment, we can get those hoses in there to hook it up.
Okay. So do you need to work with Tony on any of that?
Uh, the easements are sufficient. It's really just cutting a little hole in the gate and, you know, making it aesthetically pleasing.
I'm good with that, you know, to the extent that the landscaping interferes with our reasoning, we've got a right to do what we need to do.
And you don't want to go out there at midnight and have to hook a chain up and yank a hedge out and cut a hole in the fence.
May I have a motion for approval to purchase these two?
Motion to approve.
About two plus one. Time out. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. Uh, Mr. Newbauer, in his commentary was mentioning not only these two, but to repair the one that was struck for six thousand dollars, we'd have two replacements. What are your thoughts about that?
We could do that, but probably because the, the cost is so close, I'd probably go with the new pump because even rebuilding the old one-
Then you got a parts backup.
So I wanted to make the motion for three. Mr.- I'm sorry, I apologize. Whatever you need. I'm sorry.
I had put the motion out, but do you want me to amend the motion?
Will you amend your motion to purchase three, please?
Yes, I amend my motion to purchase three.
Uh, may I have a second for, uh, uh, motions to purchase three of these pumps? We'll have two backups.
I'll send it in him.
Sure.
Okay, we have motion-
I have a question.
Please.
One question is, you stated that repair, the cost of repairing or the rebuild did not include a warning. What's the warning on the new units?
You're gonna get a year warranty out of that.
Okay.
And, and if, and generally the people that we work with, if it's something obvious, they'll even honor it a little bit longer. But with the rebuild pump, it's like a rebuild alternator in a car, you know, it's cheaper, but the, the expenses, the labor pulling it and hooking it up.
And we've got the money in the budget for a third unit, I assume?
We, we do in our lift station rebuild and-
Okay.
The money's there and we can just move it into a different category.
Two other questions for you, Gary.
I just wanted to ask a quick question, is what is the lifespan of a pump?
Well, you would, you would hope to get eight or 10 years out of it or possibly a little longer under normal conditions.
And just the, the, the last part is the battery, the battery backup for the warning system.
And-
How, how quickly can we proceed with that?
Well, we're working on, on doing, doing that, um, with the telemetry. Hopefully, that would give us the warning we need versus the battery because all the battery backup's gonna do is give us the little light and the siren and hopefully somebody sees it.
Okay, okay.
And the telemetry would actually send a signal out and let us know that that station's down.
That's what you want.
All right. So how long will that take?
Uh, I'm hoping to have that money encumbered and that work underway before the next fiscal year starts October first because I don't want to roll it into next year and not be having you ask me why I haven't spent the money that was in the budget.
What kind of money are we talking about?
Uh, that is twenty thousand dollars on the telemetry.
For all of it?
Yeah.
For the entirety?
Uh, not for every lift station in the system.
Three mains.
The three mains and probably two others.
So we've got that money in the budget?
Right. And the new stations that we're taking online with the new development have the SCADA packs in them.
Okay.
Well, it's a metal telemetry.
Right, yeah, it's basically the same.
All right. So it's clear to the board and clear to operations and everybody that that's the intent.
So the sooner you can get that done, the better. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Good motion, Pam.
We have a, uh, we have a motion, actually an amended motion and a second to purchase three of these pumps. There's further conversation on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Five zero, Mr. Manager. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, five B, utilities expenditure for water meter installation. Call you back.
Thanks again, Chris Schumaker, utility manager. And I'm, I'm here today with a cost proposal and requesting, um, the expenditure eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars to install the last of the one hundred and thirteen radio reed meters um, in the system that need to be installed. And that price is a hundred and fifty-four dollars per meter to have U.S. Water do that work via contract. And I, I put a cost comparison down below to let you know because when you look at the original labor fee, um, for the original contract, you know, it was forty-five to sixty-two dollars, depending on the meter size for the install. And U.S. Water, their fee is a hundred and fifty-four dollars per meter. So it's significantly different. And, and I put that out there because I wanted to explain the additional expense to that was the original labor costs. They were looking at several thousand meters where they're walking down the street and putting in one after the other. Um, U.S. Water coming in, there are multiple different sized meters. They gave the same unit price, but these meters are basically all over the property. So they won't be walking down the street, putting one in after the other. They're gonna be going and they could be going a half a mile or three quarters of a mile to install a different meter. And that's, that's the reason for the price difference in the cost. And you're getting a unit cost in there with four thousand meters installed the first time. This is just a hundred and thirteen.
And they certify all the, once it's installed, we certify the installation or?
We're gonna, we're gonna be boots on the ground-
Okay.
Fi- following them and that, that meter lid won't close until that meter was checked for leaks and also checked that the MIUs and the transmitters are working.
Great.
We have-
Newbauer, please.
We have, Pam was telling me this. Um, I believe we're holding back something in the vicinity of a hundred thousand dollars.
Is there much, Danny, I think?
I don't know exactly how much is, is in that neighborhood.
From, that's from Ford Line.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think I'm far off here.
It's a little more than that, I believe, but you're close.
So my dilemma here is, why isn't this a part of that charge back this to that amount that we're holding so that it doesn't encumber us with an additional cost?
Well, if you want me to-
Yeah, Tony, we, we've talked about this more than once. Would you please?
Yeah, we have the, we, we have the addendum or amendment, I'll call it, to the Ford Line contract where the district was to, uh, finish by its own staff or separate vendor the remaining meters. Uh, and that Ford Line will no longer use, uh, ST as a subcontractor installing the meters. And we didn't, and that does not provide per se, I don't recall, for Ford Line to be responsible for making that payment. I believe it was for the district to make those payments. Uh, no, Danny? Clarify, right?
No, excuse me, Chris. For the record, Danny Nelson, district engineer, um, with Tetra Tech. I, I mean essentially what you'd be saying with that, with that approach is that because of, uh, this change, we're holding Ford Line responsible for the additional cost.
Yeah.
So that's essentially what we're, you know, what we're doing. I mean, that's, I mean ultimately, that would be a, a board decision to pull those funds from, from that retainage. Um, otherwise, I mean, it would just, it would be coming from another source and then you'd be trying to recoup those costs through that. So I mean, I think-
I guess one approach would be to authorize a letter to be sent to Ford Line saying that because of the issues under the contract and we agreed to that amendment to install the balance of the meters that, that the district did, either through its own staff or through another vendor, that there's an additional cost that we're looking to Ford Line to take care of and address. And therefore, that's an amount we plan on holding back.
That's what I, that's how I would-
Is that, are we withholding that or is it a credit?
We have a retainage.
You have the retainage.
We've retained, okay. We're withholding that.
Because we still have an audit yet to perform at their expense to see how those meters that were installed by Ford Line are operating. So I think that could be the appropriate remedy. The board, go ahead and take this action and then write a letter to Ford Line to say, we've taken this action, we've tried to mitigate the cost, but here's what's happened.
Right.
Yep.
And that we would be planning on further holding that money back.
And that wouldn't stop Chris from-
No.
From doing his work. It's just a matter of when it comes to billing, how we'll work it out. Correct? Okay.
My recollection is that Ford Line is expecting some additional costs as a result of this battle. And they have agreed to that and to audit the entire installation, if that's not-
The audit, yes, they've definitely agreed, you know, agreed to the audit at their expense. And I think whatever remedial action will be necessary because of the, the audit. And I'm not sure if they had anticipated paying for the additional cost, but I think it's well worth the effort for us to do that, to say it was, you know, is a direct result and caused by their contract non-performance, that we can hold this back and deduct it further from any money's owing to them. I think that would be appropriate.
Everybody's in agreement with that, I hope?
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Oh, that's your motion, sure, all right.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, that was Pam's motion, I'll second.
Pam's motion?
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further conversation on this issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Five zero, Mr. Manager. Chris, thank you very much.
What I will do, I'll draft, uh, take us to have the initial draft and send it to Chris and to Danny, uh, for review.
Okay, now we get to the fun stuff. Uh, my, the gentleman says we're talking about a Girl Scout building. Hello?
Yep.
Is that where everybody else is?
Yep.
You got this, right?
Who's going to, uh, who's gonna lead us through the, the? April, you're gonna start and then couldn't we rely on Dan to help us with questions as we go along?
Yes.
Please proceed.
April White, your operations manager. So I believe each of you, um, was able to go over and visit the Girl Scout building and tried to brief you on what kind of brought us up to this, uh, this idea for you to consider was basically, um, when we approved the eight hundred thousand dollars in the budget to do, to remodel this particular building. Um, we, we started conversations to make sure that that was the appropriate path for the district to make that large of an investment. And so we kind of had some general conversation about needs analysis, where we were going with, uh, the Lake Bank Erosion Project, uh, what we needed for administrative staff, as well as what we need for the operations staff. And we, we evaluated the, the square footage on what we would be doing, um, by remodeling this building and who would be benefiting that, from that. And I felt that it was, um, it was important for management to provide the supervisors with options and kind of recap in a, in a full summary that, um, by doing that, we may be actually reducing the operations, uh, available foot space here in, in the building, um, the footprint. And I wasn't sure if that was the, um, the direction we wanted to take without a great deal of consideration with the Lake Bank Erosion Project coming up. Uh, so what we did is, um, I, I believe it was back in March, we had, we had presented to you just the flyer of the Girl Scout building. And so because it had already been presented at one point in time, I would just wanted to bring that back around to the supervisors to consider the Girl Scout building as an option. Um, I think there's a couple of different, um, uh, benefits that we would, we would have. We'd be able to facilitate, um, the administrative staff here, customer service and, and the admin staff, and still allow this complex to become a full operations center, uh, which, which would provide us a larger growth allowance for future decisions. I wanted to try to put us in a position where down the road, if we made some decisions about the organization, because we've been talking about reorganizing the org chart, um, you know, kind of drilling down on departments and functions and who's doing what and, um, and of course, the question of are we appropriately staffed? And so we, we have reevaluated this, this idea of the Girl Scout building and, um, we, we went over with the, with the engineers and, um, at, you know, the preliminary conversation, we, we kind of all supported the idea that it's definitely worth, worth reviewing in full. Uh, the one concern that I have is the timing. Um, the building has been on the market for a while and, uh, the economy is picking up. And so I'm concerned that if we were to evaluate this as a serious option for the district, um, in the event that we decide that it is the appropriate thing to do, is the building still gonna be available? Uh, so we worked with the, um, listing broker and we viewed the building and we, we talked to her. And so what we have before you is a recommendation, um, to actually put a deposit on the building and allow Tony to contract and negotiate for us and in order to hold the billi- building while we do a sixty-day due diligence process. And the options have been presented to you. And so basically, um, I'm open for discussion and direction from the board on whether or not we would consider that and specifically to give us a range of, of funds, if that's the path that you choose, so we can negotiate accordingly.
Uh, that's a very nice, uh, lead in. Uh, can I ask, uh, at this point, uh, for Danny to review the memo that he provided earlier today on this, uh, issue, uh, so we can get a, uh, put in context, uh, the cost of, uh, our original decision versus this, uh, judgment.
Yes, sir. For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. Um, we've, we've been to the site multiple times. We've actually obtained what record drawings exist.
Stay for it, sure.
Oh, please proceed, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, um, we've been to the site, we've reviewed the, um, uh, design plans, um, the location. There's just a lot of positives, uh, with the site. Um, we prepared a memo that has been distributed this morning to, uh, to the board members. And it's just, um, basically based on our cursory review of how we would envision the, the building, um, being improved and comparing it to, um, improving this building. Um, one of the things, and, and at the end- Um, one of the things, and, and at the end of the memo, I'll kind of go from the back front, when we were looking at this building, one of the items that wasn't really, I wouldn't say it wasn't considered, but would have to be considered if you move forward with renovating this, is how are you, you're gonna be displacing employees while you're making improvements, um, and how would that impact? So with this space, um, and one of the nice, um, aspects of it is you could make what renovations you made while you're here, and then move staff over. So, um, just looking at the facility and considering how it would function, when you walk in the front entrance, um, presently, there's a reception area, and that reception area is open, that right now would allow the public to, um, to walk through. So you would need to create a separation space between the public and staff area, um, so you could see that as, I think, those first, those first two, uh, photos on the right. And, uh, so you'd need to create, so the first item we have as we're looking at the cost is what would that take? Um, yeah, that's a good, that's a good image there. So the entrance is right in the middle where the reception area is, and you see how that's open, and everybody, uh, the public would basically have access all the way through. So when we're looking at priorities of improvements, the building is, is in good shape, it's, uh, it's laid out well, obviously, the due diligence would have to be done, there's, um, you know, some dating on, on some of the materials that are in there, there's some, uh, cabinetry that's not necessary, would need to be removed. So the first item would be the reception area. We've placed costs on priority items in our memo to the bottom of page two, and the items that I've highlighted in red are the items that we believe are necessary to proceed with this. The first thing I want to say is, as we're looking at these costs, we, um, my costs are based on what we've seen, and that hasn't had anything to do with the due diligence or any efforts that have been done, it's just us looking at that and estimating costs. We believe these costs are quite conservative, but I wanted to make sure that as there may be unknowns that may be revealed during the due diligence phase, that you have costs to cover, that not only through the contingency, but also through the individual items. So, um, we have, you know, you're gonna have whatever you decide on that purchase offer that you would like to make. Um, the first item that I have in addition to that in terms of renovation would be the front entrance, and that would be, again, to separate out the public, um, from access to the, uh, the staff area. The next item would be to create your boardroom. Um, to the right, and if everybody saw it while you were there, that, that open space is actually very similar in size to, to this space, it's a little bit longer, um, a little bit narrower, but if you recall when you walked in there, um, to the south side or the left side of that, that space, as you walked in from the front, uh, there's a cabinet and counter space that goes the length of that wall, um, yes, sir?
Wouldn't the simpler version be, you're gonna gut this building? And just gut it, because realistically, most of it is either very outdated, as far as the materials and that type of thing are concerned? And so you're going to essentially start and build your own floor plan?
I don't think gutting, you're not gonna gut it, right?
Well, it's basically gutted, so, I think you're gonna take out cabinetry.
Just structural walls and just.
Yeah, I mean, really, there's only, there, there are two, three, three walls throughout the primary, other than the bathrooms.
So you're gonna lay the thing out as a functional layout, rather than take it apart piecemeal? It's quicker that way, much quicker that way. And you're, so you're figuring the fact of just metal studs, sheet rock, new plumbing, update the wiring, the electrical panel that's back there is seen some years, air conditioning systems seen some years, roof on the thing is original, seen some years, there's no gutters, there's one downspout. We have to portray the same stormwater management system that we're expecting our homeowners to portray, so it's going to need that as well. Um, doesn't have any impact type glass.
Very good.
Doesn't have any impact of glass or, exactly. So we're gonna need to do all that, plus addition, in addition to that, all of the concrete walkways need to be replaced, 'cause they're heaved and broken, and the driveways need to be replaced. So what you have is a brick shell with a roof that's old, and downspouts and all that that need to be done, new driveways, new walkways, because the staff, which you allude to, would, could, shouldn't, so should the residents expect something that looks that way, as compared to, when you're really comparing it, that's what you're gonna need to do, as compared to doing this particular building? Go ahead. Therefore, the practicality of the thing, I'd like to say, is impractical. It separates and segregates two total different functions of this business, and has one in one location, and all of that that needs to be done, and this in this location, and then if you ever have any kind of management individual, of which there's two, is sick, that person is going to need that additional data we're going to buy to be able to drive back and forth, to be able to try to handle all of that. My vote is that it's not a practical application. Go ahead. I think I've summed it up. Please proceed.
Well, I mean, those are, those are board discussions, board decisions, I mean, from a practicality standpoint, I think, um, the, the vision or the thought process would be that the administrative side of things would be in that facility, and the field operations would be, would be here, definitely there'd be a, you know, a space difference, I, I understand that, but in terms of us looking at this, and is this a feasible, um, option, um, I mean, yeah, you can, the, the parking lot definitely has some space, I don't, I don't think the entire sidewalk, you know, needs to be replaced, I don't know the condition of the roof, that would all be hashed out during the due diligence, so we obviously don't know, um, we don't know a lot of the, some of those things, but just, uh, looking at the shell and the building, um, if you were to build a facility, it would probably look similar to, you know, to what this is, so there are three walls on the interior, most of what is, is left in there is, is cabinetry, and certainly, that would be gutted, um, and, you know, your, your functional space would be, would be created. So what we put together was the list of items that, as you were, you would be looking at this, as to what would be the minimum that would be required to get this to, um, where you would, where you would, where you would need to be to be able to move into that space, and part of that also includes, um, exterior renovation to, um, to this building. And then there are other items that may or may not be, um, you know, helpful moving forward, and those are the items we have in black, so we have, you have the, a color copy, the items in red above, um, are those items that would be required to get you into that space, and the others, which are, what I'm referring to is the office area, is, um, what does it say, admin office, um, so is that, that's presently a completely open, you know, area. Ideally, you would possibly go in and put walls, but there's cubicles in there now, there's no reason why you couldn't have that as well. So we have money in there, um, to renovate that area, although you could, again, continue with, um, you know, cubicles. The, uh, exterior site improvements, we do have costs in there, you know, for, for making those, and then, of course, cosmetic, and then contingency, so, um, you know, the, one of the, one of the pros to that, and I think April has, has mentioned it, it's been mentioned by others, is, um, you would have an asset, so that if that space did not, you know, work in the future, I'm not advocating for that, but at least it's a value, whereas improving this building, it's not something that you would, you would have an asset, but it's not like you're gonna sell this facility, so, um, you know, that's basically what we looked at, and, and I think for what you're budgeted, um, you could definitely come in under your budget by making the improvements to that, um, to that building. So from an engineering standpoint, um, you've got no interior load-bearing walls, it could be a blank canvas, you can go in there and do what you want, but I don't think there's really a lot that you would have to do to get what you would, what you'd need, so, um, it's, uh, adjacent to the church, so you've got overflow parking if you needed that, we've worked with the church a lot in the past with holding meetings there, so there could be a good relationship, but anyhow, that's, that's basically the rev- review.
Uh, would you stand for questions from the board, please?
Yes, sir.
Board members?
Yeah, I have a question, I just want to make sure I understand what, what needs to be done to this building. Um, are you, in your quote, are you talking about tearing down walls and replacing electrical and plumbing?
No, with this, with this, the only thing I would envision to get you to that base would be, um, primarily tearing out, um, cabin, the, the cabinetry that's in there, and creating the space that would separate public from staff. Now, there's a level that you could go in and create additional items. One item is, um, if you were to walk through, um, keep it, pull it back up onto the plan? If you were to walk through the reception area towards the back, if, for those of you that went in there, towards the back, that has the double doors on both sides, it has the doors on the reception entrance, and then on the backside, it, it walks out to a covered little canopy area where there's currently a, um, picnic table. Um, although that's great, has a nice view, it's probably a little bit impractical for a, a functioning office, and that's a lot of wasted space, so one thought would be to enclose those doors, or if, if, if egress had to be provided still, you could put a, you know, a single door in either there or in the kitchen, and then you could create a work center for your copy machine, for all your paper, and, and, you know, and filing and that sort of thing. So, um, with, with that base concept, um, without you going through and really programming what your, you know, your needs or future needs might be, I wouldn't envision really having to do a lot of gutting. You are gonna have to do something in the bathroom area, I, I suspect.
To bring it up code?
To bring it up to code, because you, you know, there are four bath, there are four individual bathrooms in there, and it presently doesn't meet, um, ADA, so I would suspect you would have to do something there. You would also have to do something if, let's say, for board meetings, um, you presently would come into the reception area, you create an entrance, probably similar like what you have here, to block off, um, uh, residents, public from coming in the reception, beyond the reception area, but once they go back to the boardroom, you kind of also need to provide that separation in that hallway, so they can't go around the backside, so you're gonna have.
That's just walls, right?
It's just walls, you're not talking about a lot. I mean, I can't tell you this, the condition of the plumbing, I can't tell you the condition of the electrical, um, I would, I would suspect the electrical is in, is, is in okay condition, you may want to replace, you know, lighting outlets and, and things like that, but those are low-cost, low-cost items, um, unless you're having to go and significantly shift or modify, you know, ductwork, um, actual lighting fixtures, your, your more cosmetic items are gonna be, you know, less expensive. The water's off, so I can't tell you the condition of, you know, if there's, you know, pipe, if there's leaks or anything.
But to Gary's point, until we go in, if we proceed, until we go into inspection, inspection, we look at the ACs, we look at the roof, plumbing, we don't really know, I mean, it could be great, or it could be a nightmare, right?
This is based on, you know, co- what we can see right now, and that's.
What we know as of right now.
And that's what that due diligence, I mean, the due diligence will tell you, is this a good, you know, is this a good consideration or not, in terms of, is there mold, is there asbestos, based on when it was built, I don't think, you know, I don't think there's any asbestos there, but, um, you don't know, is, what condition are the air, you know, the HVAC system, what, what condition is it in, so, but that's what you would, that's what you'd find out from that due diligence phase.
Are you finished?
Yes, Sam, thank you.
Mark?
Um, the price, the eight hundred and twenty-five that you have, I guess I'll start with the six sixty, is just what you're considering the renovations would be needed for that building, the Girl Scout building?
The, within the six sixty, we have a cost for, um, addressing your sheet metal issue here.
Right, yeah.
So that just has to, what, what it would take, what we believe it would take, based on just our, you know, visual review of the space, um, for you to be able to, to move in there and have a functioning office.
And I heard when renovations to this building are taking place, staff would need a place to go, which would be the other building, so are we, are you still looking at the entire renovations that were gonna be, you know, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars to this building? Is it, is it that building and expanding this building?
Now, with this, with this concept, that would replace the need to expand this building. Now, that being said, now you have, now you have space that you may want to come back and revisit how this space is laid out, for instance, you have, you would have this boardroom that, um, would you keep it as a, you know, the option for a second boardroom, or would you make this office space? I mean, there's, but that, but that's a decision you would not have to make, obviously, to, today.
Right.
You could, you could consider improvements to this building in another fiscal year, but that's definitely a cost that if you decide to make changes to this building, that you would need to, you would need to consider at some point.
And I just wanted to, to know if, if that, we were consis- considering doing vote, I just wanted clarification.
But there are some improvements to this building that we, that are included in the.
Need to be done, yeah.
Yeah, and then just, just the, just do the.
Some exterior, some of the needed.
Right.
Yep.
Right, just to the building exterior, this, with this concept.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, not to say that you wouldn't want to consider impro- other interior improvements to this building, but it's not something that is currently in this.
Well, one of the reasons that I asked this was, we needed a bigger, the bigger bays out there.
Um, you're.
Buying the other building isn't going to alleviate the problem of bay space, correct?
You're, well, part of it was, your, um, your, your bay space is not presently utilized efficiently.
Okay.
Um, I would still recommend a small, which I, I think you're in that forty, fifty thousand dollar range for a small, um, storage facility, that you could keep some, your components, like your generators and items like that, because that's what's making your, um, bays non-functional. Plus you have, when you, when you go out there, you essentially have three bays. The first bay is just more or less used for staff, the washing machines, the bathroom, the, you know, the, the, you know, the leisure area, um, so that whole area is, that first bay is basically functionless as a bay, and your back bay is, is utilized as, um, as part storage and generator storage and things like that, so, yes, a, um, you know, I'm not saying that you would have to, uh, expand for a, an additional bay, I think part of it, you could reorganize how your existing space is utilized to gain back functional bays, um, in addition to doing what we had recommended previously for storage for things like the generators that aren't, that aren't just sitting there all of the time, and they're taking up your bay space, so.
Okay.
Pam?
Okay, so, um, I don't know if you would answer all of this, but, um, so, we had spoken earlier, and you said that this, what you hear has six thousand square feet, and about twenty-four hundred square feet of office space, and I don't know what the rehab was gonna give us if we were to redo this building of office space.
We, I don't know if it'll show up on that. It would be, it would be that second area.
One thousand three sixty-six.
One thousand.
Whatever forty times sixty is twenty-four hundred.
Ladies and gentlemen, the, uh, board's gonna stand in recess for ten minutes.